I just got in, okay, you can hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, we get Paul Bowden, Mark Herman, Steve Knowlesworthy, and myself. Anybody else?
OJ.
OJ's here.
Ray Corber.
Now, we just wanted to know for the, for the, for the board members. Yeah, we have enough of corn, Paul will be seated as a voting member till, oh, you're full time now, aren't you? I keep forgetting that. Sorry about that.
He's a real.
That's all right, Joe, I don't mind.
We can appoint Mark. Go ahead and point.
Mark could be there, we appointed as a seating member till him, Jim Spanos comes on. So present, we have Ray Corber on. And Ricky Elliott present. Shall we make a motion, open the meeting?
So moved.
Second? OJ seconded it, Mark? Okay. All in favor, aye, aye. Okay, Rick, would you like to make your presentation?
Sure, the, um, we got most of, um, the winter cleaned up. We have most of Ray's list. Ray was kind enough to come out and take a look around. Most of the items on his list, we got done. We finished it, the sod, we haven't, we still got a little bit of stone to put on, but we've got the inverts raised to where they need to be. And a little bit of stonework left on the head wall. I got most of the, I've got all of the downs. I got all of the downstream swales cleaned. We've got the, we've started on the upstream. The, the areas that weren't sorted, we got sawed down and got it watered. I still have a couple small areas, um, that we're gonna clean up. I got the engineer out there. Our engineer out, he's ready to sign off on it. And they've done the as-built, I don't have the paperwork yet, but I'll get, I'll get, the only, the only substantial item not installed yet, and I was waiting to make sure everybody was happy first, was the guardrail. But I've, uh, I've got, calls out to a couple of guardrail companies to have them install a guardrail. As soon as I was sure that we weren't going back into it, that we're all set.
Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, I have one, Joe.
Go ahead.
Could we allow Ray, Ray to speak about his, um, email he sent to, I believe it was Carol? Um, and, and he talked about, um, a site visit that he did on 512. And there was going to be a follow-up inspection completed early next week to ensure that these items were completed. If Ray could just, uh, comment on that, and with what Rick said, I'd appreciate it.
Ray?
Yes, hi, this is Ray Corber. Yeah, we did complete the site visit on 512, there were fifteen items that we identified, not only with respect to the detention ponds, but with the project overall. And Ron, Chief Beard has been doing the follow-up inspections and has been taking photographs, so it'd be best for him to speak directly to that.
Okay. Ron? You're on.
Okay, all right, um, yeah, so I did a site visit this morning about quarter after 5:00 AM. I believe at 5:15 AM. Like Ray had mentioned in his report, there was some dead sod that probably need to be replaced. And then, uh, there was a question about the four bay retaining water that wasn't supposed to retain water. That has evaporated out as of this morning. It wasn't within the seventy-two hours like the design, I think, said it was supposed to. But there's still some work, there's no guardrail like Rick said, and, uh, there's still some work that needs to be done there.
So, so if I could just follow up, if you don't mind, Joe. What is the purpose of the meeting tonight in regards to this? Are we here to release the bond, is that what it is, or what, what are we, what are we doing tonight?
I'm, I'm just giving you a, a continuation or a follow-up, I'm not asking for the bond until it's done.
Okay.
There's one issue I had. The main pond is also starting to develop algae, green slime. Does it give me some kind of aeration in that, or is it just gonna run off and filter out?
That's a question for an engineer, Joe, I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay, well, Ray Corber, look at it. We go.
Got a question, Joe.
Are you, I? Want to go?
What's that?
You want to be chair?
You're doing fine.
Okay. You got a haircut.
Yeah, I did. Stayed on shampoo. Um, just when, when is this, when will you have this completed, Rick?
I think that, that the last thing's gonna be that guardrail, I don't have a date for the installation of the guardrail. Everything else will be done within the next couple of weeks.
Do you have the guardrail contracted out?
The, I did not, I haven't gotten a call back from, I got two calls out, because once I knew that the engineer was happy with it, that I wasn't going back into it, right? I didn't want to put a guardrail up and then find out, had to rip it all apart and go back in because something wasn't right, but the, they've done the as-built, it's built according to plan. The engineer, Horizon says he's ready to sign off on it, he just needs to fill in the paperwork. He's been out and did his inspection. Uh, I got, I got probably twenty-five, twenty-five, forty feet of square, square feet of sod to replace over in the corner. I got a little bit of stonework on that head wall to do, and then put the guardrail on. It's working great, I mean, it's doing exactly what it's supposed to, and whatever storms we've had, everything about it worked good and it looks good.
Rick, we really haven't had any storms, have we?
Well, we had some early, um, not lately, no, it's been dry. But my biggest problem now is finding water to, to keep the sod and, uh, and, uh, the growth hydrated. But basically, I went in and I, I'm stealing that detention water, I put a pump in that detention water and set up a irrigation system so I can make sure it's all solid.
Okay, how about the four bay retaining water?
I, yeah, I'm, it's built exactly according to that plan, so, you know, I'll ask the guys, maybe when Ray's back out there, he can give us some suggestions, but it's built exactly the way it was supposed to be built.
So, hi, this is Ray again, if I can offer a suggestion, um, Rick, it might be, it might be best to, um, when, when do you think, well, let me, when do you think Horizons is gonna have the as-built and the construction control affidavit done and submitted?
And that's, they've done the work, so it's a matter of paperwork, I would say it's, you know, today's, today's Wednesday, so I'm thinking probably by the beginning of next week.
Okay, so maybe the, maybe, I'm just gonna offer this as a suggestion, that's, you know, maybe the sequence should be submit the as-built and the construction control affidavit for review, we'll take a look at it. If we have any questions, we can contact Horizons Direct. And once we get that all squared away, maybe do a final site visit and do a walkthrough with yourself and, and Ron, and maybe myself.
Sure.
I don't know that we need to have Horizons there, but if you'd like to have them there, that's fine. Uh, and then, uh, do that before you put the guardrail up.
I, I will set all of that up as quickly as I can for you.
Okay.
Hey, hey, Ray, uh, one of your comments was, um, submit the stormwater PPP inspection reports via email to Ron and yourself. Have any of those been submitted, or has the form been drafted up, has that all done?
No, those, yeah, we haven't, we haven't gotten any, um, inspection reports. And correct me if I'm wrong, Rick, but I think inspections is supposed to be done weekly with inspection reports submitted to the town, and we haven't seen them, and...
I will. Yeah, I, I completely dropped the ball on that, I, I, it was winter when we started this. And in winter, there is no report, but I, but I didn't pick it up in the spring, and that's my fault. We haven't had any, we've had a couple of fences down, we repair it on a regular basis, I've been doing the inspections, but not the reports, so that's why there's no silt in any of those past any of that silt fence. But I will, I'll, I'll start submitting those reports and get them into you starting this Friday.
Okay.
Because I, I would think those reports would be relevant and determining whether it's working, not working, and what, what any deficiencies are.
Paul, the, the reports that I'm gonna be giving are on, um, I, I don't have any way to measure the pond, that's not what I'm measuring, I'm, I'm inspecting the silt fence and making sure that nothing's getting past the silt fence, nothing is getting past the silt fence, and I've been doing the inspection on the silt fence, repairing it on a regular basis, that's why it's, it's all, I mean, there was one or two places where it was sagging and Ray pointed it out, but we do that every week, we pick it up, dogs go by, they jump on it.
So, so is the inspection report only about silt fencing, or is it about the, the performance of the, the ponds and stuff like that?
It's, it's not about the performance of the pond.
Ray, can you, can you tell?
Yes, yeah, so the, the inspection reports that we're talking about are part of the stormwater pollution prevention plan that is in effect at the site, so, and the SWIP is basically for the temporary erosion and sediment control measures, it's not for the permanent stormwater facilities. So Rick is correct in his articulation, it's, it's for the temporary.
So is there any report that's, that's done on a regular basis that, um, determines whether the ponds are working, not working? If there's any difficulties with them so that the town can, can know?
Uh, well, the best way to do that is to observe the ponds while they're functioning, so, for example, for, for, you know, for this particular design, if there's a significant rainstorm event, go out, observe the ponds, make sure that they're draining the way they're supposed to be draining. Within seventy-two hours, that four bay is supposed to be evacuated, if it is, great, if it isn't, that's a problem. So it's a matter of going out and observing the operation of the stormwater management facilities, make sure they're operating correctly. It's a visual inspection.
Right, so who, who, how does that get done, is that Ron, is that what Ron does, is that? Do you do make a report on of that?
Yeah, Ron's in the best position to do that, because Ron does his rounds every morning at five. So, um, so yeah, so, so Ron's in the best position to do that, because he can go, he can go check out the ponds and two or three days later, go back and do another check, see what the status is of the, uh, the four bay. And this is a, this is a wet pond, so the, uh, the, the micro pool is supposed to be, the detention pond basin is supposed to always be wet, so that's not an issue.
Is, is there a process?
Sorry.
So, sorry about my further questions, but is there a process that, um, is in place that says, if it doesn't work, who to notify and how to get it taken care of, or is it just, oh, oops? I mean, yeah.
Well, I think if, you know, if it does, if it doesn't work, um, again, you, then it's, you know, it's up to the, it's up to the owner, in which case, this Mr. Elliott here, to, um, to get it to work correctly. So, uh, the planning board signed off on, on, on a set of plans, and it needs to work as per the design intent.
And I guess that's, that, then the lining of my whole question is, so if, if at some point in time we're thinking about releasing a bond, shouldn't we make sure that it performs as it does for a little, it should, for a little while before we release a bond?
Yeah, and I, don't you have, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't there two bonds established for this, isn't there one for the construction and then one for the operation and maintenance?
Yes.
And I think that was, I think one was for eighty-two thousand, I think the other was for like thirty-five thousand, is that correct? So is it, isn't the thirty-five thousand dollars set aside to make sure that they operate correctly? Maybe I'm wrong on that, I just.
I'm not sure, I can't, I can't remember that.
Yeah, I think you're right, I, I think the bigger number was for the actual, uh, construction of the pond.
I'm, I'm not sure, OJ, I think, was the one that brought that up that way. Do you have any comments on that, OJ, because I think I remember you saying something about just splitting that up.
Yeah, I remember that we split, we split it up as Ray said, into two pieces, a construction bond and a performance bond, I don't remember what the amounts were for each. It's on record, you can look it up.
Back to the minutes and see that.
So.
That's what it says in the minutes of the meeting.
So the only reason I believe that there's any water in that four bay is because we still have water coming off the mountain. When that stopped, that four bay dried right out, I don't think, it's, this isn't an issue of it not being built right. Built exactly the way it's supposed to be, but up until a week or two ago, we still had water coming off that mountain, coming right through the site. Which is, which is what the problem was with the first one, when it was supposed to go dry, it could never go dry because it was constantly being fed by water coming off the, the mountain coming through the development. So we slowed it down, we cleaned it up, and we're releasing it through that one inch hole in that pipe, and everything in there is working exactly the way my understanding is it was going to.
So Ray, if I could, if I could ask the question, right, who was the one that set the guideline that said after seventy, seventy-two hours, it's supposed to be dry, was that you, was that the state, was that, is that the design of it, is that the engineering?
No, that's, that's the, that's, that's the standard that we use for, um, for dry ponds, is you want it to evacuate after seventy-two hours either, however it's supposed to be, you know, whatever the design intended, either through infiltration or pass-through, so, uh, in this case, it's the, 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 um, element that we're talking about here is the four bay, which is, which is the, uh, the portion of the pond that takes out the heavier sediments before, you know, the water gets transferred into the, you know, the next cell, so, and then it gets ultimately discharged from there to the, to the swell that's downstream of the, uh, facility. So the four bay, the four bay should, you know, within seventy-two hours, the four bay should dry out.
So do you see, well, it sounds like what Rick's saying is, is contrary to what you're saying in a little way, because if you get some rain and it's draining out of the hillside, and it continues for, like it, off and on, just a little bit here, a little bit there, you're not gonna drain that, that four bay, it's what Rick's saying, and it, I guess my question would be, is that, is that a big concern at that point?
Uh, in my opinion, it's not, I mean, if you got continuous flow, I mean, these, these, these facilities are, are designed to operate on a continuous basis, so if you get continuous flow through the four bay and there's sedimentation that's happening in the four bay, then the four bay's doing its function. You know, if you, you can have a, you know, continuous rainstorm that, you know, that keeps that thing full for two or three days, but after the rainstorm event and things dry up, seventy-two hours later, it'd be great if there was no water in there, but again, in, after twenty-four hours, the rain could start again, and that thing's always gonna be full for several days, so the intent is that, you know, when the event stops, seventy-two hours later, you know, the, the, the four bay is dry, after the sun pops out and you get, you get a, you know, several days worth of dry weather.
Which it did.
Which Rick is saying it did, I mean, when I was there, there was water in the pond, so, and it was, and it was dry that day, and it had been dry, I think, a day or two before, so that's why, that's why the comments showed up in the report.
Right, right, I mean.
When we're up there, Ray, I'll bring you to the top of the development and show you where the water's coming into the top, it's, it's
Okay.
It'd just be easier for you to see the origin, and and that's, it's right at the base of that wetland that's up on top, so I'll bring you up there, when we're, when we're together, I'll bring you up and show you where it's coming from.
Okay, that sounds good.
So if we're gonna release these bonds at some point in time, it would be Ray that would give us the all's okay on both bonds, or at least the performance bond, to make sure that, that it's performing as, as it's supposed to be, is that correct? OJ's gonna hand up.
OJ?
Um, according to the, to the decision that we made, the bond is eighty, the, the construction bond is eighty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars. The applicant can request release of the bond once all of the conditions have been met from the planning board. The bond shall be released at the discretion of the planning board after a public hearing. That's how we set it up, so that's how we need to do it, so it's not very sober, it's not the selectmen, it's this planning board that will have a public hearing and make that decision.
So, so that was the eighty-two thousand dollar one, or is that the total of both?
That's the eighty-two thousand, now, then, it goes on to say, a maintenance bond, separate bond, of thirty-five thousand shall be provided. And it goes on to say that that's for the, for the ongoing maintenance, and da-da-da-da. There shall be a bond so long as MCC is responsible for the maintenance and operations of the ponds.
So is that, is that a bond that goes on in perpetuity then, is that what you're saying?
Uh, what this implies to me is that so long as the entity MCC, and if you go to the Mount Coolidge Construction,
Correct.
is, is, is responsible for the, um, ponds, there'll be a bond. Once the homeowners association takes that over as part of the whole development, that bond gets released.
Okay.
That's, that's what it says to me.
And I, yeah, I think you're right, I think I remember that now, that's how you, I think you were the one that broke it up that way, that was a good idea.
Do we have any other members of the board who want to make comments?
Joe, I just don't think we're in, ready to release that bond tonight, we haven't even noticed.
I totally agree.
Nobody's asking for it.
Okay.
No, I want the town happy before I ask for it, I want to know that you're gonna say yes before I ask for it.
Do we have any other members who want to make a comment before we open the public session?
I was just wondering, Ray, this is Steve, are you happy with whatever you see going on up there right now, is just a few little odds and ends left? Nothing major, nothing drastic?
Uh, no, actually, I'm not, I mean, um, they, I mean, I, the last time I was up there was on the twelfth, and, uh, you, you've seen my list of fifteen items, uh, those are significant items that need to be addressed, so Rick says he's taken care of most of them, but I haven't put eyes on it yet, so I don't know, so, again, Ron's up there doing the, doing, doing the review, he would be the best doing the site visits on an ongoing basis, he would be the best to articulate just current status. I don't mean to put you on the spot, Ron, but I haven't been up there since the twelfth.
Yeah, like, like I said, I, you know, I was up there earlier this morning, and there's, there's still work to be done, you know, and with the way things are, obviously helps, good helps hard to find, so I'm sure Rick's doing the best he can.
So, so I just pulled up Ron's email to town manager, said I went to the ponds to see if Rick had done any work, complete what was needed prior to tonight's planning board meeting, and nothing has been done. Ron Beard, that was on May twenty-sixth, which is today.
Right, that was this morning. Yep, and that's, that's based on, you know, what, uh, the walkthrough I did with Ray. Yep. So, you know, and Rick's not asking for it tonight, you know, the bond to be released.
No, no, I'm, I understand, I'm, I'm just, Rick sounded like you were saying that there were a lot of things that were done. You have an email here that says that nothing has been done, it just seems a little.
In regards to the pond, yep.
Yeah.
So, the, the top, well, I'll answer any questions you have, we, we, we put a whole bunch of sod that was on the top, when the machines were parked over on the side, we pulled all of that out, we sawed it all of that, we replaced some of the sod, they, I only have one little piece of sod that's, hasn't been replaced yet. I've, I've worked on the swales going in and going out, um, and we got the streets cleaned up.
So, so where are these pictures that you sent today, Ron, are, are those pictures from today?
Yeah, that was from about 5:15 AM this morning, of the pond, yep.
So, Rick, what, what I'm looking at is some significant places that need to be resawed, because the stuff up by the roadside's still all dead, there's areas to the right of the two outlet culverts, and there's an area to the left that still needs to be resawed.
Okay, so that's, my understanding is that all of those areas are gonna grow, and what we've been doing is watering them. So I don't know whether the lull is out there, but we had the lull out there, we had the pump in the pond, we had irrigation systems to keep that wet and to hydrate it. And I'm not looking at your pictures, so I don't know.
Rick, to be quite honest with you, I have not seen any hoses or any pumps in that pond watering that dead grass. Uh, you know, I'm being totally honest, and, and I drive through there every day.
I, I understand that, but we don't leave the, we don't leave the lull out, the lull goes back down and gets stationed back where it was. But we have, in fact, we have, in fact, I'll show you the system tomorrow or Friday when we're out there. It's, all of that stuff is together, they've got a portable generator, because we don't have power out there.
Right.
They've got a pump set up to go to a hose, they've got, they got the lull to reach over the top of the water so we can drop it down in, and we've been irrigating that, that area, we think that is, we don't think that's dead. There's one section that's dead over on the left-hand side, next to the buildings, that, that, we think that's dead, and that has to be replaced. But that's a, that's a twenty-five or a forty-square-foot area, that's not, that's not the big area that you're talking about, the area you're talking about ran from the top of the bank, from the crest of the hill, back down towards the stream, and ran from there along the road, and all of that, we put down, we put down, and we've been irrigating it to, to get it to come back. We think it's alive, we just think it needs water.
Okay, well. I think it'd be better to tear it out, hide your seed, it, you probably have grass up at seven to ten days. Well, I think.
So, and just, so, so every, so we all have the same shared understanding, the, you know, the, the, the benchmark in terms of acceptance is that, you know, the vegetation needs to be established, eighty-five percent of that vegetation needs to be established, and it's not just across the whole pond, it's in specific areas as well, so, okay, that's the benchmark that we'll use as far as, you know, any, you know, any comments that you'll get from us, so it's not established, it's not established, and we'll point it out in our site visits.
Yeah, I, I don't think that's gonna be a problem getting, if, if, if I'm right, and that sod is alive and watering brings it green, then it'll look like the rest of the pond, I, that small section that's over next to the units, I have to replace, that I know. But the rest of it, I think, I think comes up and it's, and it's there, I mean, all the, all the stuff that's around the water, all of the stuff that's in the pond is in fact, green and vital and alive, and, and if anybody looks at it, they can see that.
They'll see the pictures, so you do have some green growing there.
Well, Rick, I just sent you Ron's pictures, you can see.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's one area there was right down by the pond, it's not growing at all.
That, there is one small area on the left-hand side. That we've known about, we thought it might come back, and now we, the last time we were out there, we were sure that it wasn't, we were gonna get it replaced.
Do we have any other questions from the board members? If not, I'd like to ask somebody to make a motion, open the public session.
So moved.
Second. We seconded it.
Who's the second?
Kim.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any public discussion?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was easy.
Not quite.
I think, I think we should have another hearing on this matter, once the, um, items on Ray's list are completed, that would be my suggestion.
I would suggest, we have Carol set up a date for it, when all the data comes in.
You want, uh, June ninth or June twenty-third?
Can we, do, do we have to make, make a motion to have it go to a specific date, Carol, or do, can we?
We, we have to pick a specific date.
I would ask Rick, I would ask Rick when he thinks that's gonna be ready, because it's.
Well, I'd put it out at least a month, and I don't.
That, that grass is gonna need a month anyway.
Well, it, yeah.
I would suggest June twenty-third myself.
Yeah, I agree with Joe.
That's fine with me.
Okay, would it make more sense to go into July, the first meeting in July?
It might, yeah, I mean, a little, a little bit longer for Ray wouldn't hurt, I guess.
I mean, honestly, the, the, um, at least, my opinion is that I'm gonna base my vote on what Ron and Ray Corber have to say. So, once everything is ready for them to inspect, I mean, they might not come out the very next day. Gotta give them time to come out and look at it and weigh in on it. And then we should have a meeting, I, I think that'll be, either the first or second meeting in July would be more practical.
I'd like to see, I would agree, and I would like to see some, you know, some bigger flows going through that to see how it's really gonna work. I'd like to see, I would agree. And I would like to see some, you know, some bigger flows going through that to see how it's really going to work.
Okay, so the, um, July fourteenth or the twenty-eighth?
Let's do the twenty-eighth.
He's going to need it.
Do you have a problem with it?
I agree with the twenty-eighth.
All in favor of the twenty-eighth?
We need a motion.
Motion for a second. Who's got the second?
OJ.
Second.
Yeah, because he has to get the ASGIL plans done and, you know, they have to do inspections and.
Yeah, and he has to line up some more contractors to finish up, so.
Yeah.
So we have motion and second.
Yes, we just need to vote on it.
Yeah, at six o'clock.
Okay, so Joe, call for a vote.
All in favor?
Okay.
Okay.
So Carol, what else do we have on the agenda tonight?
Just the minutes from April twenty-eighth.
Now, Mr. Chairman, you all stay with me?
Yes, sir.
And me?
Yes.
Go have supper.
Have a good night.
Have a good evening. Have a good.
You're welcome.
I have a few changes, suggestions on the minutes.
Okay, let me grab them. Okay.
So the page numbers are, are wrong. They should say page, they all say end of page six. Be page one of twenty-five, two of twenty-five, et cetera.
Wait a minute, Ron.
On the bottom?
Printer, because mine, mine says the right page numbers, so. Not sure what happened.
Okay. Okay, my set doesn't. I know you had the heading wrong. Ryan, you revise that, is that correct?
I got the headings.
Okay, but mine on the bottom left is page one of six, two of six, et cetera, et cetera.
Mine also says twenty-five.
Okay. And page five of twenty-five, the forty-eight thousand square foot medical office, that's in red. Is that something you wanted to correct?
No, I, I put that in red because, um, they had proposed forty-eight. But then if you look on the next page, um, when she was talking about it, she called it forty-four. So I just didn't know whether, does it, does it matter that they're different? You know, that I posted for forty-eight and now they're talking forty-four. So I'm just not clear.
Yeah, what does, what does it say in their plans?
Well, I'm looking at the last, uh, few pages that they gave us and it doesn't say how big the office, the buildings are on this one. So it'd be out in the other room.
Okay, well, I, I guess just, just whenever.
Plans and then I'll put that number in there.
Yeah. Page ten, um, bottom of the page in yellow about the snack bar, which hobo train or golf?
Yeah, we talked in the office, we didn't know where the snack bar was. We didn't think there was one, so. She talked about a snack bar. So I thought maybe somebody would know.
I believe that's in part of the railroad station. There is a small building onto the left. You go in, there's just some small stuff there once in a while, like sugar.
Okay, so the railroad then, the train station. All right.
But there's also one just outside of it. They brought in, I don't know if it's kind, if Fadden Sugar Shack is still there or not.
Okay.
Well, I, I'm not sure that that's what she was referring to because she's, she's listing off the existing and, and the word is properties, but I think she meant buildings on that contribute to the sewer flow. There, there is, um, I don't, I, I, I don't know, because the snack bar of the hobo is inside the, the hobo building, correct? There's only one building at, at the railroad.
Yeah, it has the bathrooms in it.
Yeah, and then at the, at the golf, there is a building that also has the bathrooms in it. Uh, it's where you register. I, I don't know if I'd consider it a snack bar. I think they sell bottled drinks or something in there, but.
Well, that wouldn't be a snack bar. I didn't know what she was talking about, so. I thought maybe somebody else.
Actually, maybe we ought to just scratch that out because we have the Hobo Hills Adventure Golf and the Hobo Railroad both has contributed into the sewer. And that snack bar is part of Hobo Railroad already.
I would agree with that.
Okay. All right.
I'll make a motion. We approve as amended.
I got a couple more things I want to.
Oh, all right. I thought you, I thought you were done.
Um, page fourteen, the bottom paragraph, um,
Hold on.
Yeah, third line up from the bottom. Talking about the snowmaking line pumps.
Okay.
Um, in order to pressurize the water all the way up to the hydrant, now that the twenty-four inch main is deep underground, but you have to get enough pressure to push it up and out of the hydrant to feed my engine so that the, so that they had to shut the return to the East Pemiduasa River, et cetera. And it doesn't seem to read very well.
Yeah, I don't know what he meant, so I just wrote what he said.
Ron's on, does he want to clarify that?
Yeah, um, because Loon's, uh, pumps are volume pumps and not pressure pumps. He, uh, it wastes back to the Pemi, what they're not using. So they had to actually close the waste gate to build pressure to bring it up to the elevation of the hydrant. That's above the water line. I don't know if that clarified it for you or not, but.
Well, what if I, what if I have you look at it and then fix it so that it says what you meant to say?
I mean, basically the pumps don't build pressure in their current configuration is what you're trying to say.
That's correct.
Language that would make, make it simple without getting technical.
Yeah.
Yeah. Unless you close the dump valve.
Right. Yeah, because they're high-volume pumps, not high-pressure.
Right.
That's all I need to write, yeah.
Then page nineteen. And the bonding, bonding, excuse me, third paragraph, um. That's fine. Does, uh, so the, the third paragraph, uh, fourth line up from the bottom of that paragraph says Selectmen's Representative Robinson asked whether performance bonding is more related to restoring the site to the way it is now versus putting in the infrastructure like storm drains or water or soil or buildings or foundations. And, you know, he, he asked a question and it just says Town Engineer Corber agreed.
Agreed that it was, it was, it was more related to restoring the site.
Right.
Okay. Because he said, I agree with OJ. Okay, that's good.
Hey, I don't have anything else.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Carol, any other business you want to bring up?
Um, no, I, um, you want me to bring, uh, back for the next meeting, the, the information that Peter Malia gave us on the impact fees? You want to have a separate, you know, I, I don't have anything scheduled right now for, um, the first meeting in June. I.
I guess I can make.
For a lot of people and, you know, I don't know when those things are going to come in. But at this point, I don't have anything. This very minute, I don't have anything.
I mean, I think we already talked, we already have the impact fees established and we've already raised them.
Peter has, Peter sent us some information. I think that's worthy of letting him speak to if we're going to, um, ever assess any.
I mean, you're talking like an exaction fee?
No.
I think OJ had his hand up, Joe.
Yeah, I, I think that it'd be, you know, questions have been brought up and I'm not sure if the whole board is on the same page as far as impact fees, extraction fees, bedroom tax, water tap and sewer tap fees. And I think it'd be worth having a discussion about what those are right now before we talk about what we want in the future. Because, because I think just understanding what exists now is, is, is the place to start. Um, I'm not sure if we need a whole special meeting just to do this. Can we do this on the second meeting in June? If there's nothing on the first, first June meeting, let's, let's not meet to, to, to talk about this, but let's ask that people read that. It's a six-page thing that Peter Malia sent. Um, and it really talks about the difference between the impact fee and an extraction fee. And there's, there is a difference in the town, um, is allowed to do both of those.
If we could, I'd, I'd also include for the board, uh, the most recent memorandum from KV Partners that deals with the water and sewer, which also relates to, um, increasing fees to be able to continue to pay for advancements in our water and sewer structure, even though we, and it, and they've, their, um, their memorandum states that, that the town does have the capacity. From what I understand, from what I read, OJ, correct me if I'm wrong, that, um, there is sufficient capacity in water and sewer for, um, everything that the planning board has approved now and have, that they have approved in the past. That's on the books.
That, that's correct.
But one of Ray's comments was to keep, don't let the guard down and make sure that we take a look at things like, and I don't think he specifically said impact fees, but take a look at our fee structure, make sure we have that we, you know, that we're not just waiting till the day when you, everyone says, oh, what do we do now? So it, it may be a good rider on to what we're looking at as far as fees.
Maybe, maybe we could put that as a second agenda item on that meeting, second meeting in June. Send out the, um, the memo from Ray Corber on the, the sewer capacity study. Um, and we can discuss the, uh, the thing that Peter sent and fees in general, and we can discuss the sewer capacity and, and look at Ray's suggestions.
And the water, I mean, it, I, I think it dealt with, again, dealt with water and sewer, right? The hydraulic loading of the water and the sewer. Um, it delivered both. So I think, you know, I think we can, it would, it would be good to take a look at that, make sure that we have some sort of funding, you know, mechanism in place that, that will help us to continue on, you know, once everything's going to be required, asking for service.
Do you need either Ray or Peter at those meetings, at that meeting, or you just want to talk about it first or?
I mean, we're not proposing anything. We're just reviewing what's on the books. I don't, I don't think we need them in there now.
I don't think we need them. Think we just, well, we can decide on it. We can have them look it over, see what we did.
I don't know that I agree with you. And, and the reason I say that is because both Ray and Peter have specific, areas of interest about, Ray's would be about, you know, how much he sees in the future our needs are and whether our fee structures are set to, um, be able to deliver that. Whether we need to have more impact fees and, or make, you know, and, and Peter would talk about, yeah, so if you do need the impact fees, here's where you need to go legally. So I mean, we can talk about it all we want, but till we have the professionals kind of guide us as the, if we do need impact fees, how much we do need and, and what we're going to need them for. I, I would think that they would need to weigh in on that. It, it would be important to have, well, we, we can talk about theories all we want, but those are the guys that kind of know.
Joe, I think you should call the board.
I'm out of me. I mean, I'm just.
Okay, Steve?
Yeah, yeah, I'm all for that. But that, that six, Peter Malia wrote, is that something new? I don't remember seeing that anywhere.
It's in a packet.
Like, I sent it to you right after, um, two meetings ago. Uh, because you, on the April twenty-eighth, yeah, on April twenty-eighth, you had asked about it and Peter had offered to send you something and he sent me something probably the next day or within two days and then I forwarded it to you. But I can, I can forward it again. Um, I, I mean, obviously I'll forward it again.
Yeah, thank you.
Mark?
OJ had his hand up, I thought.
Oh, I see him now.
Yeah.
OJ?
Yeah, um, I, I think it would be actually helpful to have both of them available. Um, there, there's certainly been some confusion in the planning board, um, about impact fees, what we can do, what we do do, what we have done, and the same thing about off-site extractions. Um, you know, saying, oh, we never do this and we shouldn't. In fact, that has taken place in, in, um, I, I think it'd be helpful if Peter could explain to us what is, um, and I know he sent the six-page thing, but just so, so that if, if we have questions or as we have questions, he can help clarify when it is, um, appropriate or legal to do those off-site extractions. And as, and as far as, um, Ray's report, he's looking at two different, um, he's looking at the percentage of the wastewater treatment plant design capacity and the percentage of the actionable threshold. And I think it's important, um, I, I, I think I understand the difference between those two. But I don't want to be the one to explain it to the planning board because I'm not, I'm not, um, thoroughly knowledgeable of, of those two, um, triggers. And I want to make sure that we're all on the same page and that we don't, instead of each one of us having our individual interpretation of that. Um, so unless someone else can, can research that and figure that and explain to us, I think Ray Corber would be helpful to do that.
Where, where did this report come from? Was that sent to the board?
It, it just, just came out yesterday. I'm sorry, Monday, today's Wednesday. Uh, the board got this Monday night. Um, and Paul was at the meeting and got a, a copy of it, but this should be sent out to the planning board. This is where.
Right.
Okay, I'll send it out because I, I found the impact fee, um, that Peter Malia had been sent out. So I'm going to send that out right now.
One from Peter Malia, as well as the one from Ray Corber. That was, they, they have both in the same email.
I'll send you this one right now.
Yeah, that's great. That'd be good.
Carol, what do we need in order to have these available, both either impact fees or off-site extractions? Um, so that we can make a schedule. Because they do serve different purposes and they have different accounting and record-keeping requirements.
I mean, that's the type, that's the type of question I'm thinking we can, we can, um, work with Ray, um, Peter Malia at this, at this June meeting.
Well, I mean, both of them are, there's, they're different. They may be both necessary. It seems to me, I'm, I'm, I'm the new guy in town, but it seems to me that we have a constant and recurring clash between people who don't want to raise taxes and that's understandable. And many of those people are afraid of losing their houses, for example. So it's very understandable.
And many of those people are afraid of losing their houses, for example. So it's very understandable on one hand. And on the other hand, we don't want to completely cut off whole growth and development, and we have needs, you know, that we have to provide for. So this is a logical means of squaring the circle. It won't raise, we we will avoid raising some taxes and we can still make some of some of the changes and uh, modifications and improvements to systems that we need if we adopt these means of charging people for them. And they make a lot of sense to me. Plus, I can tell you as an absolute fact that developers all over the state and the country are very accustomed to paying them and they won't squeak less. And when you say you have to pay this much money for that, people just pay the money. You know, it's not a it's not news.
I mean, I I think they pay to a point.
I I think the point is much higher than you can possibly imagine. And um, uh, the numbers are very big, but the fact of the matter is that the incentive is very so and the cost, the cost of the town are very big. I mean, there's one thing is going to be to just right? So we haven't charged anything for many things.
You see, that's that's not, that's not correct. That's why I I I made the statement that the planning board is not on the same page. And Mark, I recognize that you're
I'm not, I'm not.
newer among this group. Um, but but I'd like to start that discussion with with what we do have the impact fees and what we do and have done for extraction fees so that that can be a basis for the discussion moving forward. And I think Peter's help of this six-page um, information uh, paper that he sent out would be helpful, um, also as a basis to start with. And then move on to say, to say what we should do in the future, but we first need to understand what we do now, what's what's legal to do. And okay, with those two parameters now, let's plan for the future.
Reasonable. I couldn't possibly, I could not possibly disagree with.
Okay.
Um, you know, no way.
I like it.
And if we have to make any changes to our ordinances, that would be the time to draft those up for March meeting.
Exactly, exactly.
I mean, as evident just by the developers that have come in, some of them who have offered to come up to the plate, say, well, we'll help you where we can, that the as Marx is there willing to to help out most times. So, um, you know, maybe we're missing boat on some of this and it'd be a good time to start talking about it.
Motion to adjourn, Joe.
One question. I got something to bring up. I kept thinking about that sign going on the uh, urgent care center. Mark, please wait.
I'm waiting.
I I I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave this meeting because I, if it comes, it's going to come to the ZBA. And I I mean, I'd rather not make any comments on it now.
This will affect the ZBA, but go ahead.
Thank you.
Okay, the only comment I want to make is is Carol can probably look into it. Is any way we can put those blue packet, placard signs on the services sign on ninety-three? Saying urgent care, like to have for hospitals. That would eliminate the need for a big sign.
Well, I I think she looked into that and explored that with Sherry King, um, who is the person who does the advertising for the New Hampshire DOT. And I think that she mentioned at one of those hearings that, um, it didn't qualify, whatever the requirements were um, for those blue signs, it didn't qualify. I'm not sure that I'm remembering that exactly.
Does she know for sure? There's speculation. That's what I want to find out. Would like to find out if I could.
Breakfast and all that stuff. You'd think it would fit in there, yeah.
Because all the big towns, they don't have, they don't have big hospital signs. They have these runs, they have a big H on it. As you come into town on the interstate. There'd be less offensive than a seventy-five, eight-foot tower on on a highway.
You know, a- again, you know, Paul made the point, the 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 jurisdiction of the seventy-five-foot sign right now is in the hands of the ZBA. It's not even appropriate for us to be talking about this.
I'm just saying.
Saying it's not appropriate for us to be talking about this. If you want to look at what what it takes to get an H sign up on the highway, you feel free to do that, but but this board should not be talking about the seventy-five-foot sign or the other alternatives that the applicant should be considering instead of that. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a second?
Joe, Mark seconded it, Joe.
I'm not seated, so it's a. Oh, I am.
I.
Good night, all.
Thank you all.